Call this meeting to order. The pledge will be led by the people at Miss Davenport's school, Smyrna West. Robert Dean, Emmanuel McElroy, and Charles Isbell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time we'll have a moment of silence. Please remember our troops. Okay, approved of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. You want to put that other before the visitors?
Yeah, in addition to board meetings, we have county commission meeting, health education meeting, budget meeting, we have ten, and two of our assistant superintendents have to be at the courthouse at 5:30, so we're going to move agenda item 11 just before visitors and the spotlight. Be patient with us, I don't think it'll last. It won't be too terribly painful. Financial matters. General purpose school budget amendments, the Jennings Jones grant for virtual enterprise. This amendment budgets the 2009-2010 grant of $20,000 from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for the virtual enterprise program, the $12,000 in general purpose school fund balance that is left from the '08-'09 grant, and the related expenditures to help support the virtual enterprise program. These funds will be used to build a stronger virtual enterprise international network in Tennessee by providing professional development to facilitate student learning. And we're recommending that you amend $20,000 in revenue to account 44570 for the 2009-2010 grant from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for the virtual enterprise program, to amend the remaining $12,000 from the GPS fund balance that is left from the '08-'09 grant and the related $32,000 expenditures to help support the virtual enterprise program as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Just quick comment, I think everybody on the board appreciates all that Jennings Jones Foundation does to support education, they are a great contributor, a help to us. Two, coordinated school health. This amendment reallocates $2,300 in air coordinated school health expenditures to account 72120-499 Other materials and supplies to account 72120-370 substitute teachers. These substitutes will cover classes while teachers get trained for the Michigan model, which is a curriculum that will be integrated in at least sixteen of our schools this year. And recommend that you amend $2,300 in air coordinated school health expenditures to 72120-499 Other materials and supplies to account 72120-370 substitute teachers as presented.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Three. Three, transfer for temporary funding of federal programs. On October the 15th, 2009, the Rutherford County Board and County Commission approved a million dollar transfer resolution and ordered a loan up to one million from the general purpose school fund balance to the school system's federal projects fund in order to avoid temporary cash deficits in the federal project fund. The one million transfer shall remain in the federal project fund as a designated fund balance from the general purpose school fund and may be repaid at any time as noted in a resolution passed by the Board of Education and the County Commission. This amendment is the budgetary side of the resolution that was approved on October the 15th, 2009. The amendment decreases the GPS fund balance by one million, increases transfers to other funds by a million. Recommend that you amend a million dollars from the general purpose school fund balance and the budget one million in transfers to other funds, 141-99100-590.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Rick, I think it would be well for somebody to, for those who are watching this evening's proceeding and our visitors here, we had some discussion about that at our work session Tuesday night. I expressed some concern over potential shortfall from the state budget as far as it relates to the BEP because of the lack of tax revenues and how those things might impact us. If, Mr. Gill, briefly.
Yeah, first and foremost, you know, I think everybody's read the governor projects maybe as much as a $1.5 billion shortfall in tax revenue across the state of Tennessee. Typically, he's protected education all the way across the board, and it's the last, I don't think he's ever made any cut in the BEP, but even we are in jeopardy this year facing some kind of cut, which would obviously have a real negative impact on us in particular because we're already starting out being lower funded than many systems in part because of all the schools we built. So we're holding our breath that that doesn't happen, but in the interim, it is not totally out of the realm of possibility that even late this spring, it could impact us. So, Ms. Samving and I met and thought about ways we could reduce spending under what we've already budgeted this year. We talked about material supplies, you know, we haven't filled as many positions as we might ordinarily have. So I guess, you know, we're backing off the throttle for sure and making sure that we do everything within our power to make sure we build up our fund balance so that in case we have a real rainy day, we'll be ready for it.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Gill. No other discussion, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Incidentally, also, Mr. Doris Jernigan, they're now televising our work sessions where a lot of this stuff is discussed, so you can catch that on there.
I think this is a, the budget is of such importance and has such a great impact on us that we need to talk about it and share those concerns with those who view our proceedings.
Agree. Four, special ed, high cost students. School system has received an additional $19,709 from the state to partially reimburse us for high cost special education students that we educated last school year. This year's figure also includes some funds for high cost preschool students. These funds must be amended in the current year's budget for special education expenditures. The expenditures will be for special education teacher pay and benefits in account 71200 Special Education and 73400 Preschool. Recommend that we amend $14,874 in IDEA revenues and the related expenditures for special ed teachers and amend $4,835 in preschool revenue and the related expenditures for preschool teachers as presented.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Don.
What is the total special ed budget?
Sir?
Total special ed budget?
How much is the total special ed budget?
I'm not sure. You want to get that real fast, I don't have it on this PC.
You don't have it? Well, I'd just like to know what it is. Especially, doesn't that be right now?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
B? Building program amendments. Project cleanup. The first of these building program amendments is a routine cleanup amendment that allocates existing funds within the following projects. No new funds are involved and no funds are being moved to another project. The amendment allocates the following amounts. Rockvale Middle, $1,600. Brown's Chapel Elementary, $1,445,205. Christiana Elementary renovation, $43,346. Whitworth Buchanan Middle School, $5,960,928. Oakland Middle, $3,449,134. For Brown's Chapel Elementary School, $1,410,000, the amendment is separating the furniture, equipment, technology, et cetera into the separate line items for these expenditures. For Whitworth Buchanan and Oakland Middle, the amendment separates architect fees, engineering fees, and site development from the beginning approved construction line item. Recommend that you amend, as presented, the following five building program projects in amounts, which allocates existing budget funds to other accounts within the same project. Rockvale Middle, $1,600. Brown's Chapel Elementary, $1,445,205. Christiana Elementary renovation, $43,356. Whitworth Buchanan, $5,960,928. And Oakland Middle, $3,449,134.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Two, Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle School furniture, fixtures, and equipment. This amendment moves $2,425,000 in existing funding for the furniture, equipment, technology, phones, and library book budget from the construction line for both Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools where it was originally budgeted. The amounts are based on expenditures at Rockvale Middle School. Recommend that we amend $2,425,000, pardon me, from the construction budget for both Oakland and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools to budget the furniture, equipment, technology, phones, and library books as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools shortfall. This amendment asks the County Commission to transfer the $312,655 in funds from the sale of the excess Gurley property to the building program fund to help fund the middle school shortfall. The $1,166,790 shortfall was caused by the changes Murfreesboro required when the school system applied for permits for the two middle schools. The amendment also transfers the $104,294 remaining in the Rockvale Middle project, $20,193 remaining in Siegel High Irrigation project, $287,040 remaining in the Brown's Chapel project, $19,820 remaining in the Christiana Elementary renovation project, and $422,788 in the future high school budget to fund the shortfall. And I think it would be, I think we need to give a quick explanation why we're a little over a million dollars short on these two buildings. We sold the county commission because there's going to be substantial savings to build those two schools, and there were. And typically, the attorney general of the state of Tennessee says that when a county builds an educational occupancy, you don't have to seek permits through the city. City views it a different way, they think that we do have to seek permits through the city. That said, there was going to be a period of time where we, I guess, fought over whether we did or didn't have to pay them, and in order to get the schools completed, we decided to go ahead and permit them. And even though our architects and engineers had drawn, and T.D.O. had agreed that what we were doing would suffice for requirements, the city had a different view, and they required that we come back and do things in addition to what we already would have done, to the tune of, how much? 1.1 million?
1.165.
And I don't think any one of the boards was real happy about it, you know, it's money we could have used elsewhere, but at any rate, we didn't do any, we weren't negligent in what we estimated, it was the simple fact that the city is requiring things that we don't think are necessary, again, to the tune of 1.1 million dollar. So that said, I'm recommended that you, to request a transfer of $312,655 from the sale of the excess Gurley property and to amend the $104,294 remaining in the Rockvale Middle project, $20,193 remaining in Siegel High Irrigation project, $287,040 remaining in the Brown's Chapel project, $19,820 remaining in Christiana Elementary renovation project, and $422,788 in the future high school budget to fund the shortfalls of $532,276 at Whitworth Buchanan, and $634,514 at Oakland Middle as presented.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. In reality, this actually costs county taxpayers and city taxpayers money that they probably shouldn't have to spend.
Yes.
That being said, I'll just be quiet.
Concerning Mr. Donald Jernigan's question, I forgot I have the budget posted on the webpage, just, oh, just under 22 and a half million in the GP budget for special ed, out of a $243 million budget.
Twenty-two million, and the state just gave us 19,000 for high cost.
Well, I already budgeted the high cost.
What is that?
The state just gave us 19,000 for high cost.
Jeff, I wonder if the special ed budget has kind of paralleled the, our overall budget over the years, or has it increased at a faster pace?
It has grown at a quicker pace.
Yeah.
Not every year, but there have been years where it has.
Yeah. Any other discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Gill, C.
I think that's all, you guys carry on. C, two-year building program. Given the fact that, just, I don't want to toss this out there, given the fact that we, you guys want some numbers with regards to Stewart's Creek versus Rockvale, and also there might be some concerns right now about the bleachers, and since we're not asking for any money anytime soon, if you want, I will put these numbers together with respect to the two high schools and bring it back at a later time and just approve the plan because it's not, from my perspective, urgent that we do it now.
I would certainly like to see some numbers also.
Is there any problem with doing that, pulling it off now and then bringing it back when we've got the information? Makes sense to me. Dor.
Yeah, it gives us some information that we don't have presently to help in making the decision.
We don't have to vote to pull that off, do we, Joyce? Do we have to vote to pull that off the agenda? I don't think so. Okay, any more discussion on that? Rick? Yes, sir.
And I'm all for that, I think we need to get the numbers, and this is going to leave us with nothing opening for a year, right?
Yes.
And we all understand the budget situation, but I think we're all uncomfortable about that, too, aren't we? I mean, we started to climb back out of our hole.
Yeah, I kind of agree, but I think the reality of it is, with the two middle schools that are upward of probably 50 million, and when we start that high school, you're probably talking about another 55 million. You know, we kind of got, we got a little breathing room elementary-wise, although parts of the county are a little worse off than others. I think it, you know, I think they viewed it as our responsibility to let them catch their breath, maybe.
One or two of them have mentioned maybe doing some baby steps in that one year, but I'm not sure what those steps would be and whether or not we want to go down that road.
Right.
Wasn't there some expression that the county might not go to the bond market in 2011? So if they don't go and borrow money, then we won't have any building money.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any other discussion on that? We'll pull, no, it's, yeah, we'll pull that off.
I agree with Dr. Burnham, ideally, we could start something, but it's not going to happen.
Alright, so now we want to go back to visitors.
Visitors, and then the spotlight.
Okay. Mr. Steve Glass, you're first up, and Mr. Glass and I, and I talked to you earlier, so I know, you know that this is three minutes.
Yes, I do, thank you very much.
We stick to that pretty closely and, okay, go ahead.
You all do have a handout, it's pretty self-explanatory. I do want to thank you for talking to me at all hours of the night, Doris and Wayne. I've found you all very accessible, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to you when I, when I had a concern. These numbers that are on the handout came from Shane Morgan. He did want me to qualify that the Siegel Middle and the Oakland Middle projected numbers are based on the lines that are projected or proposed, you know, that have not been voted on, and so those aren't hard numbers, but those are based on the lines that y'all are looking at right now. The projected free and reduced lunch numbers, according to him, will not change in looking at the issue that I want to talk to you about. And so the information on that sheet is pretty self-explanatory. There are sixteen children in the Brentmead subdivision who are siblings of current high schoolers at Siegel High School. They currently attend Siegel Middle School. So they are sixth, seventh, or eighth graders at Siegel Middle School, and they have a sibling in the ninth, tenth, or eleventh grade at Siegel High School. And I want you to know, we don't oppose the rezoning, we know that with progress, we have to do that to rezone, to get people to the right schools, but I've been in business for 25 years, I've written a lot of plans, I think they were successful plans, but I don't know if I ever wrote one that didn't need adjustment, that we had to go back and fix it to make things right if something wasn't exactly perfect. And so, in this situation, we have the issue of these middle schoolers and these high schoolers being at different high schools. In my situation, it's two years where I will have a son at Oakland High School and a daughter at Siegel High School, and it's just an unmanageable situation as far as I'm concerned. What the basis, or what it boils down to is this, we're asking that you consider grandfathering any child that's one of these sixteen children who are currently at Siegel Middle School to allow them to finish their education at Siegel Middle School and attend Siegel High School so that we don't have children at two high schools. I have racked my brain trying to find out what the cost would be to the school district. I do not, I cannot foresee any financial cost. There's no negative impact on the socioeconomic numbers, as Shane Morgan has already done the calculations. The school capacity, it would not put us over the top on school capacity at the middle school or the high school, and we're not asking for transportation. Now, the cost to the families, if you don't consider amending the current ruling, is that families like mine, families like Mr. Malane, we now have double time commitments. I mean, we are stretched the way it is to get kids to activities. Both of his kids, my kids, other children in our neighborhood, they are in sports, they are in band, they're in all kinds of after-school activities, and now if we want them to have that opportunity, we have to get them to different places.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, that's, I actually gave you four minutes.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Mr. Malane? Dr. Malane?
Thank you. Watching my friend Steve go made me realize how fast three minutes rolls, so I'll get to it. I am John Malane, I have sent the board several different emails on this topic, I hope, I hate to communicate via email because you don't get all the right emotion, I hope my emails were taken as just trying to be informative and flat, I wasn't trying in any way be accusatory. I'm addressing the same issue, the siblings issue at Brentmead, I have a junior at Siegel High and an eighth grader at Siegel Middle, and I'm going to take a little different tack, I say amen to everything that my, that my friend Steve said. But my, my view on this is a little bit more emotional. I think, I don't think any of you probably got on the school board because you love fighting over budgets or wrestling with parents, any of that type of thing, and I know you didn't do it for the money, that's, you're not getting rich doing this, but probably you did it because you wanted to help the school kids of Rutherford County, you thought there was something you could add, some value you could give for them, and I believe you're doing that, I think I put that in my emails as well, thank you very much for your service. But I don't want you to forget that school zoning, yes, there's a map, there's a zone, it looks nice when you do it the right way, the buses run well when you do it the right way, but kids are involved, and what school you go to is part of your identity, it's a big deal for you. My current situation, my, my family situation, I have a daughter who graduated Siegel High, excuse me, I have a son, he's a junior, as I said, and I have an eighth grader. My eighth grader, when, the day after your zoning vote, which we kind of saw coming, we figured out it was going to happen at some point, and I told the family that, and I said there wasn't a sibling thing in the paper, he welled up, tears started to well up at breakfast, and he manned up, he didn't cry, he hung in there, and we've talked about it, we've done a lot of different things, we've prayed about it, we've had a lot of stuff about it. Now, he didn't tear up because of Oakland, we don't have any problem with Oakland, wonderful school, my daughter did her freshman year there, had a great time, no problem with that, it's just that's following your family. You know, we've got two Siegel graduates here, hopefully, if my son hangs in there, two Siegel graduates, and he's going to be an Oakland kid the way things hang out right now. He's the youngest, he's already an outcast, you know, these are the type of things that go on in families, and I know where your pressures are, I understand all the zoning and all that, but I hope, maybe, that because of why you got on the school board to help these kids, maybe with this small number, sixteen isn't probably even the number, it's probably going to be less than that by the time you get some kid in private school and some other things like that, we're just kind of requesting that maybe you'll rethink this and let these kids follow their siblings into Siegel and finish that off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malane. I'm sure the board will take that into consideration. Any discussion on that at this point? Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Cherry might remind them about the meeting that we actually would be dealing with that, the 8th?
8th of December.
8th December.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for reminding me of that.
Okay, ready, seven.
Yes.
Spotlight on education, service learning at Smyrna West. Rutherford County is among the seven districts in the state to be awarded a three-year Learn and Serve grant. This grant requires that additional schools covering grades K-12 participate in service learning each year. Smyrna West Alternative School will share how they link service learning to the curriculum while providing meaningful service to the community. In advance of y'all doing it, I want to say, we couldn't be any more proud of Smyrna West, you guys do a remarkable job, Kate, and I don't want, don't let this go your head or anything now, but you guys, I'm proud, so proud of what you've done, she truly has taken interest in kids, and you can see it in their progress. I think it's been your passion, and your staff, too, you have done a tremendous job motivating them, and I so much appreciate it, as I'm sure the school board does. So that said, Ms. Davenport, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to join you, and thank you for letting us apply for the District Tennessee Learn and Serve Grant because it was a pretty massive undertaking, thank you especially to James Evans for helping write the most of it, and my teachers, and the involvement from the community. I want to explain a little bit about service learning, but then I'm going to turn it over to some students. I had the opportunity to attend the National Service Learning Conference in Nashville last year, along with five of my teachers who presented, and I sat at the Administrators' Academy with Mr. Doris Jernigan, and it was a wonderful experience. Service learning is a powerful method for student engagement. Service learning allows students the opportunity to see what they can accomplish and use the school, the skills that they learn in the classroom in practical, real-world situations. Students improve in the three As, which we call attendance, attitude, and academics, while they're making a difference in their community. They learn traits to be productive citizens who are aware of their own abilities to affect the world around them in a positive way, and service learning is researched, proven to be a dropout prevention, not just in an alternative school, but in every school in the county. And we hope that schools all over the county will take advantage of the many grants that are offered through the Service Learning, Learn and Serve District-wide Grant. We brought Emmanuel, Charles, and Robert to tell why they believe that service learning is an important part of their education at Smyrna West.
Hi, my name is Robert, and I came to talk about, talk to y'all about service learning. Service learning is a big part- Service learning is a big part of Smyrna West. It helps a lot of the students out. It's a really good class. Service learning has taught me how to be a leader in all aspects of life, including at school and out of school. And most of all to my little brother and my nephews. And the most important thing that I have learned at Smyrna West is respect. I have learned to respect my elders, my teachers, my adult, any adult, and most of all, my parents. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emmanuel McElroy. And service learning has taught me, it isn't hard work if you don't work hard at something. Service learning taught me like I'd be more respectful to my parents, I'd work as a team, and all as one. Service learning also taught me how to become a leader and have the responsibilities of a leader. It also taught me, like, don't argue with my peers and just work as a team.
My name is Charles Isabelle. At Smyrna West Alternative, I have learned to take leadership role in service learning projects. And I have learned to multitask and I've learned responsibility for my schoolwork. I have learned to respect my elders more thoroughly. And if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them after the.
I want to make a comment and then I'll ask the questions. I want to reiterate what Mr. Gill said about Ms. Davenport. Ms. Davenport taught for me for quite a few years. She's an outstanding teacher, she's an outstanding principal. You know, and I know most of the board members have been to see Smyrna West and the things that she's accomplished there. And you gentlemen too, anytime I've been over there, you've been, everybody there has been most respectful to me. And I appreciate that. And I look forward to going back and visiting again. I visit every once in a while. And if I don't, she calls me and says, you better get over here. But she does an excellent job. And remember those things when you go back to school. Remember those things. Respect your parents, respect other people, respect your friends. And you get a long way in life just by that. Yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, gets you a long way. That starts things right off. When you say that, then people just have a whole different attitude about what you do. Anyone else?
I believe the community has bought into this program also. If you'll look and see a pavilion out there and a basketball court. And in the structure, the rock walls and the fountain pond that the students have built. That the board has not put any money. Mrs. Davenport has been able to twist the arms of local business owners to participate. Also, the Rotary Club there is their PTO. Basically is their fundraising organization and has partnership with that program. And Mrs. Davenport, you've done an outstanding job. And I would also like to commend you for what you've been able to. And these young men, congratulations, gentlemen. You know, you're maturing, you're growing.
With all this praise, it's gonna be tough, you know that?
I wonder if they can share something about what it's like to work as a team. You and your fellow students, how do you work together in service learning?
I used to not want to work as a team, I always wanted to do it myself. Just be me and depend on myself. But when I got to Smyrna West, I learned how to depend on other people instead of just myself. And it helps when you're doing projects and you need somebody to talk to.
Smyrna West. Thought I could do it on my own, but you get things faster when you got a team worker. You get things done a lot faster than like, if you think you can do everything yourself, you can't.
I learned that it's a lot easier when you work together instead of just doing it by yourself. And it's a lot more fun when you have more people doing one project than just yourself.
I just want to say that I have learned that every child has a wonderful talent. Every, I've always known that, but they just flourish when you give them the opportunities to take responsibility and make decisions. This is a great transition tool. If every, my hope is that our sending schools will implement this. And our kids can go back into something they really feel strongly about. And they know and feel comfortable in transitioning back to their home schools.
Just one more question for them. I noticed that they are going across the street to help in an elementary school where they take the younger student and help them to learn. Maybe math, but I noticed reading was one of those things. Tell us a little bit about that. How do you do this?
It's Ms. Nezalee's group, and it's called TTRM. And we go over and help kids who really aren't good at reading or don't get enough attention at home. And we give them that attention and help them learn how to read a little bit better. It helps them with their English, and they really enjoy coming and seeing us every week. And we really enjoy it.
Y'all didn't know that the board knew everything you do, did it?
Helping the kids at the elementary school, I mean, lots of me, like, photo store, you'll see me mentoring one of David Urie's students there. And me, we really didn't know each other, but we got, as I helped him read, got knowing me better. Just had fun with him.
When we go over there, we just help them learn their vocabulary words and help them read. Like, if they need help, we just help them as much as we can. The students are really fun there, and I enjoy doing it. Feel good when I help them.
You've become teachers now, haven't you? Any other questions for them? Thank you, gentlemen.
We have a photo story to share with you.
Service learning.
Making a difference by combining service with learning.
Service from the heart.
Service learning is performing a helpful act for someone or a group of people and learn the typical things that you would learn in a classroom but hands-on.
Service learning gives me the opportunity to have some responsibility, teach myself self-discipline, and learn in a hands-on way.
Through service learning, I hope to gain as much knowledge when helping or providing service to others as I have during the process of preparing and reflecting.
Service learning is a method of learning where you identify a real community need, apply knowledge, gain new insight, and share with others.
Service learning is helping the community or someone to experience and learn from what is done to be a better citizen and help the community prosper.
Service learning is learning experience where you gain knowledge by doing hands-on activities and providing a service for others.
Service learning is doing a good thing for someone while gaining knowledge about the service.
Service learning is to do something to gain knowledge about the people or things you help do in a hands-on training.
Service learning is composed of projects that people do to help their school or things of that nature. It can help you gain responsibility and improve morale from doing things that help people.
Service learning is taking part in a service to help you learn about the service and how it impacts the community.
Service learning connects classroom learning with service. The four steps of service learning are preparation, action, reflection, demonstration, and celebration.
Service learning is learning while you're providing service to others as a group or even individually. During service learning, it incorporates self-discipline, responsibility, respect for yourself and others, and classroom knowledge as well. In my experiences of service learning, I was just more than glad to be able to give or do something to help someone and not jump to expecting something in return.
In the process of service learning, it begins with preparation. It involves identifying a real need or problem. Research the underlying cause of the need and solutions of the identified issue or problem.
After preparation, you take action and follow through by using academics and knowledge from the classroom and discover new information and learn from mistakes.
Reflection is all about discovering new information and insight and learning from your mistakes and achieving a deeper understanding for the future.
Demonstrate and celebrate is about educating others about the issue, developing future project ideas, involving active participation, and planning a concluding celebration to honor the benefits to community. And here are some past service learning projects of the school.
In 2003, Smyrna West Retaining Wall was the first ever service learning project. We placed fifth in the countywide beautification contest. Students were given the opportunity to show their talents and have their opinions heard. There is great pride in those students who built the wall. The students also created and included a time capsule.
In the fall of 2005, students were looking for a way to get a better upper body workout during PT. And the idea for a fitness trail was born. We received a BEP grant of $500 to help construct the project, which was complete in the spring of 2006.
In fall of 2006, Smyrna Ready Mix, a community partner, donated the concrete for a basketball court. A service learning project quickly evolved. The students researched the dimensions of a basketball court and how to mix concrete to secure the basketball goals.
The students worked hard on the project and were very excited when the finishing touches were added. Students designed and hand-painted the center court using art and math skills.
The quote "Leave it all in the court" was inspired by Nikki Giovanni, a world-renowned poet who visited our school.
Finally, the day of celebration came as the students were able to play on the basketball court for the first time. Today, students enjoy playing on the basketball court as a reward for moving through the level system and perfect attendance.
This 2005 service learning project was part of campus beautification for Smyrna West. It was not only for beauty, but also for a habitat for fish life to thrive with the help of students.
Students continue to maintain, learn, and enjoy working with the fish pond.
Heritage Day began in 2007 as a way for Smyrna West students to demonstrate traits and crafts that were necessary skills to have during the eighteen hundreds. Students researched how to prepare for the upcoming winter months with activities such as building houses, open fire cooking, preserving food, sharing sheep, and weaving cloth. Smyrna West students invited local elementary students to visit and enjoy hands-on activities.
Last year, Heritage Day was expanded to include dulcimer concert and soldiers from Stones River Battlefield. This event allowed Smyrna West students the opportunity to share with the community. Many learning opportunities they experienced at our school, they demonstrate leadership, and they teach younger students about days gone by.
The Dulcimer Dandies were invited to play at the 2008 Heritage Day. Many students were intrigued by the instruments. Consequently, many of the members offered the students an opportunity to learn how to play. This sparked the idea of starting our own dulcimer group. We ordered cardboard dulcimer kits and assembled and decorated them individually. One of the Dulcimer Dandies, Sue Sutton, volunteered her time to teach students how to play. Several service learning classes had the opportunity to visit a local retirement home and play for the patients.
Many students were invited to participate in the Grand Ole Dulcimer Festival on a Sunday afternoon in May. This was a rare opportunity for students who had never before heard of a dulcimer. As part of the demonstration, Smyrna West students were featured in an article in an international magazine for Dulcimer players. This year for Heritage Day, we decided to focus on Tennessee history. We researched and featured Tennessee wildlife, the Bell Witch myth, historical people and homes, and Mr. Henson brought homemade toys.
The Dulcimer Dandies played their dulcimers. The Boy Scouts cooked donuts and taught us how to tie robes. Dean Fritz's sheared sheep and Stones River Battlefield sent a Civil War soldier to share his stories.
Heritage Day was educational as well as fun for all.
Students in history and service learning classes studied and carefully created intricate models of famous landmarks from around the world. Their hard work produced beautiful replicas that were given to local veterans at the Veterans Hospital in Murfreesboro. The students spent time visiting the patients and talking to them about their artwork. As we shared our models with the veterans and told our stories about the historical buildings, we learned just as much from their respective vests as they did from us.
Mr. Henson's interest in the looms led to an exciting and labor-intensive project that helped to refurbish and rebuild looms that lay in waste, the two local historic museums. Smyrna West students rebuilt the looms, restored them, and were able to create beautiful cloth on them before they were returned to the happy curators at the Sam Davis Home in Oakland's mansion.
The Read Across America Project was to get Smyrna West students to go to local elementary schools to encourage students to enrich their lives by reading.
The Pennies Make Sense Service Learning Project was initiated by middle school students to raise money and supplies for hurricane victims. The entire school quickly joined forces on the project and once put in talk to the Rotary Club to gain more support. The Rotarians matched the money that Smyrna West students had raised.
Teen Trend Setters Reading Mentors, or TTRM, is an award-winning program that trains high school students to mentor elementary school students.
TTRM was created in 2002 by Jeb Bush Mentoring Initiative. It began in Florida and went nationwide in the 2008-2009 school year. Smyrna West was one of the few schools selected to pilot this program in Tennessee.
After training with Ms. Oliver, an MTSU student, TTRM students were able to travel to David Urie Elementary. We were able to help third graders improve their reading skills.
All Rotarians who have helped our school so much came to us with the need to spread the word about Read to Succeed Literacy Matters. Students were quick to pick up the service learning project and began an advertising campaign to promote literacy. Students researched and developed a public service announcement, an informational PowerPoint, a commercial, and a rap. They compiled it all together on a literacy website. Because of the students' effort in this project as well as the TTRM project, Smyrna West was awarded the Literacy School of the Year.
After reading The Shadow Club, students began to discuss bullying and the problems that it caused in schools. After discussing and researching, the students worked with Officer Sanford to create a service learning program called Stop the Bullying. This program was so successful that it's become an ongoing program shared with local elementary schools. Students present and share with students at local schools. This program educated students about the need to show respect to themselves and others. This was the first service learning project with a musical collaboration.
This has been a sample of what we have accomplished at Smyrna West. We thank you for your time and giving us the opportunity to present at the school board meeting.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think everybody's. Give them just a second to. Mr. Gill, number eight.
Board update. Mr. Odom is going to review the Rutherford County's performance on this 2009 State Report Card. Mr. Odom?
I really should have let the Smyrna West students do this. They do a great job of presentation. We've been doing this for several years, but this is a look at Rutherford County for the schools for the 2008-2009 school year. So we'll take a look at it. The report card look, of course, is a, you have a series of tabs across when you go to the State Department of Education. For those who are maybe watching on television, go to the State Department of Education website, and there'll be a button there that says a Tennessee Department of Education Report Card. You click that, you can go to the State Report Card, any system in Tennessee or any school. As a public school in Tennessee, you then use the tabs and can pick up the information. Beginning with Rutherford County Schools' profile for, and they say 2008 because that's when the year began, it's 2008-2009. We had, they count forty-three schools because they count our adult high school is included in that. So that's why it says forty-three, the grade served, hundred percent Saks accredited and a hundred percent Saks nine through twelve safe schools. There's your teacher count, twenty-three, thirty-nine, and administrators, one oh eight. One thing that's not there is the number of students. And this little note in red there is in there because Rutherford County called. Because that was not our number of students. We asked why. And so they have excluded in that count on that page the grade N students. And that's special ed students with options seven, eight, and nine. They are in our schools generally and all. And I asked why, even asked the commissioner why, and he doesn't know for sure either. But there's actually four hundred and thirteen more that's actually option seven, eight, nine, or grade N. This is information on our demographics. And once again, this year I've compared it with 2000 so you could see the changes in Rutherford County. And you do see some changes in percentage as since 2000. African-American students from ten point two to now sixteen point two last year. Some of the biggest changes in here, Hispanic enrollment from one point six to four point eight. So you know, you're seeing almost a five-fold increase in that particular group.
Eight point four, didn't I?
It is an eight point four, but it's almost five times larger between what it was in 2000 to what we're seeing this year. So that's a very significant increase. Limited English proficient, you know, it was one point three percent in 2000, now it's five point one. So that's another interesting thing for you to see. Another thing that came up earlier. Another thing that came up earlier this evening, you were asking Mr. Jurnan about special ed and the funding and all, in two thousand fifteen percent of our students were special ed. This last year is thirteen point eight, the Tennessee average is fourteen point five, which kind of a thing that lets us see, are we over-identifying or not over-identifying? And it does not appear from these numbers that we're over-identifying students for special education. Your economically disadvantaged numbers are up considerably, from twenty-two point seven, that's your free and reduced lunch, up to forty point eight last year. So that's a considerable change in those years. That kind of catches your attention. Yes, sir?
Has the economy allowed those figures to be adjusted? I mean, as far as the percentages, the economy's down, and then the requirements to meet some of the things are up, so.
It's a combination. Each year, the federal government places a new form based on the number of people in the family, and there's a dollar figure associated with that, and if a family's income does not meet that particular level, they could be free, or they could be reduced, or it would be full pay. But each year, the federal government changes that dollar amount, and then also, I think we're seeing now an economy issue that was associated with the downturn.
But what point in the school year is this data captured? If it were in September, that's really pre-recession.
They use, what if they do with this one, I don't know specifically on this piece of data. They do things like generally third month, fifth month, seventh month. They pull a lot of their data over three different periods and do an averaging. A lot of the information is pulled about the third month of the year, because you're past that registration period and all. So I'm not, I can answer that question specifically, which month, but probably close to the third, maybe fifth, okay? Your Title I's up also, seven percent over fourteen percent. But that's just some interesting information there, how Rutherford County is changing. Another interesting thing, of course, here is the financial, two thousand versus two thousand and eight, and this year, we're nine hundred and forty-four dollars below the state average per pupil expenditure. We're seven thousand five seventy-four. Two years ago, we were one thousand forty-eight dollars behind the state average. Last year, we were nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars below the state average. We're gaining about fifty dollars a year, so nineteen or twenty years will be there, Dr. Burns. But that's per pupil expenditure, and you think of our thirty-seven to thirty-eight thousand students, how much more that would be if you just had.
About thirty-five million, thirty-six million.
You could do a lot of things with thirty-five million.
Certainly could. But doesn't that indicate that we're doing a pretty good job with the amount of money that we've had available?
I really think the citizens of Rutherford County are getting a quality program at a very financial astute rate.
I applaud the administration for being able to do the things that we're able to with the funds we've been given.
We do stretch those in our instructional or operational dollars, and it shows there, you know, I think so. I think your moves, you know, in many ways where you're doing your geothermal, the things that you're doing in building your buildings, and you're looking at those to reduce cost, all of that's making a tremendous difference. In two thousand, we were three hundred and sixty-eight dollars below the average, so it kind of lets you see. You might find interesting how much we spend in local, forty percent of it's local, seven percent's federal, fifty-three percent's state funding, is how Rutherford County Schools operate, so that's an interesting piece of information for you also. This is the tab for No Child Left Behind, and it determines or is illustrative of whether or not we're meeting adequate yearly progress, and this is the elementary one. We have to account for all of these subgroups. The only subgroup where we do not have forty-five students enrolled is Native American, and all of the others, we have to account for that. You'll go to a lot of school systems in Tennessee, and they'll not have to account for a number of these subgroups. But in Rutherford County, because of our size, we have the forty-five just about everywhere.
Is there some discussion to lower that to thirty?
There was some initial discussion with the last administration, because it varies some across the United States, and there was some discussion in the reauthorization that they would set the cut number. It's forty-five in Tennessee. Originally, it was over two hundred in Texas, and it's now been brought down quite a bit. You know, until they reauthorize No Child Left Behind, I don't think we'll know. It was a previous commissioner of education.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Odom. You know, if you don't, as he says, most schools do have forty-five, in particular since they're so large, but the system has forty-five in everything but Native American. And if you're dinged in any particular area, you know, if you don't make adequate yearly progress, that could put the system on target. We've had schools, one or two schools, that had straight A's on their report card, value-added in, and didn't make it in special education, and therefore were considered a targeted school. And I don't know if you've got this on here, but you mentioned something to me the other day. I don't want this to come across the wrong way, but since we've been here, when we began, there were how many, eleven schools on target out of about?
The year Mr. Gill started, there were eleven schools on target, and the system was on target. We've been to zero at one point in that. We picked up this year, there's three, but two of those are clear, and I'll show you that, so. We've made a lot of progress in the time we've been here. Here's the high school. Again, we have forty-five everywhere. There's one place in reading language arts here with the limited English proficient. Remember, when they're testing English, you're only testing English II students, the Gateway English II in high school, and so the numbers are pulled from that, and that's why it's less than forty-five. There's certainly more than forty-five in high school, it's just taking English II, Gateway at that time. I put a circle around some. Last year, these right here had a red X in them. In other words, we weren't making adequate yearly progress in those categories. All of those were cleared this year, so we now have adequate yearly progress in all of those. We were not on target as a system, because you have to fail the same subject area in both elementary and secondary. And so that's how that's applied, but we are meeting them all now in both elementary and secondary, okay? But that's an improvement also from a year ago. The system status, as you can see from the green arrow there, is in good standing. We have, you're seeing a number there, we had forty-three schools, there's thirty-seven, two, and one. Reason the numbers do not match the two alternative schools, their scores go back to when the students take the test there, and they are tested, but it flows back to their home school. The other's adult high school, which doesn't count in that, so that's the difference in the three. You have two target schools, and you have one school in school improvement. The targets are Rock Springs Middle, and it's for math students with disabilities. Laverne High, graduation rate, they're on target for graduation rate, but they met it in oh nine, so they're not going to go into improvement, because they've cleared it. Now, if for some reason they don't make in some other area, they might be targeting in, but they would not go up to the next notch. Oakland High School this year was an improving. You have to make AYP for two years in a row. Oakland High has met the grad rate with better than ninety percent for oh nine of the spring. Remember, graduation rates reported one year later, and so when it comes out in July, both Laverne High and Oakland High will have met their graduation rate. So the only thing we really have left is this. Now, that's assuming that you don't get caught for something else this year, you know, but we know those two have already made it, based on their graduation rate. That's an elementary mathematics report for what we call Adequate Yearly Progress, AYP. Just a quick comparison there for you. In two thousand nine, ninety-five percent of our students, and you can search each one, I'm not going to do that tonight, but you can go in the disaggregated groups and look at each one. Ninety-five percent, the state is ninety-one percent proficient in advanced in elementary math. Elementary reading and language arts, ninety-five percent of our students, and again, ninety-one percent statewide, so we're above the statewide there. You then take a look at high school, and your high school math is gauged by Algebra I. We're at ninety-four percent, the state's at eighty-nine. I want to point out something else to you, though, that's very significant in this, and that's a trend. Last, in two thousand eight, you had fifty-four point five percent of your students that were scoring advanced. Last year, that number went up to sixty-six point three. And I, you know, I tell principals, that's just a very important number to me, because not only you're making students proficient, you're moving them beyond proficiency, so that's significant to me. When you take a look at reading and language arts, you see the same thing again. You see that we're ninety-seven percent versus the state's ninety-four. Also, once again, the student scoring advanced went from sixty-nine point two to seventy-three point seven. Again, a noted improvement there. Academic achievement, Rutherford County scored all A's with fifty-five percent. You see over here this time, you're seeing a score of fifty percent. When they re-norm the test, you go back to the average of fifty percent. We were working with nineteen ninety-eight norms, and so that had varied by subject and over a period of time, and the whole state of Tennessee was quite a bit above fifty percent. So that's why you cannot compare this year with prior years, because you have a different base year. Nineteen ninety-eight in the past, this is the two thousand eight, nine school year, and so we received all A's for that.
Why would the base score be a B?
Because fifty will get you a B at the state, it will not, fifty, if we had scored fifty instead of fifty-five, we would also have a B. But I don't know why they said it, there's a range, I've got it over, there's a range that earns you the A, B, and C. It's not one score, but it's between two percentile numbers. And it would just be where they set that scale, but that would, you know, what parents are going to say?
All above average in Tennessee is.
Well, I guess.
I'm not putting that, our performance is awesome, don't take it that way, but you see what I'm saying. It's like Lekwobu, and all the kids are above average, and yeah.
I guess the shocking thing to a parent, they're going, they may open up, and their child may have been sixty-five percent last year, and now they're fifty-nine percent, and they say, oh, mama, I did worse. No, they changed the norming, so you just really have to take this very seriously here. You just cannot compare the two when you do a re-norming like that. I've never done this before, but I'm going to do something tonight, and that, because they've changed the re-norming, because they've done some things that hasn't been done before, I want to show you some other systems around us and some with similar size to us, so you can kind of see a comparison. And Rutherford County's in this one, all A's. Murphishboro, all Bs. Williamson County has all A's. Montgomery has two Bs and two As. Oak Ridge, another one that, you know, lots of money spent on students when you kind of get to Oak Ridge, all A's. Knox County, all Bs, and Wilson County's three Bs and an A. So it kind of lets you see how we're doing in comparison with some other districts. That becomes a little bit more evident when you start taking a look at value-added. We'll look at that in just a second. The writing achievement, our fifth grade scored an A, our writing's an A, our eleventh grade was an A. They have not re-normed writing yet, so there may be some changes in writing, because that norm goes back a ways too. But you can still tell, like in eighth grade, ours scored an average of four point four, whereas statewide, it was a four point two on a rubric of one to six. Okay, here's your value-added, and this is, value-added is measured in normal curve equivalent points. It's like a percentile, where you take the highest score in the state to the lowest score in the state, and you divide it up between ninety-nine percentile to one percentile. Rutherford County earned two Bs and two Cs. A year ago, we had all A's here, okay? So that's the big change.
And a year's worth of growth is a C.
See, a C is from a negative point forty-nine to a positive point fifty. That's the scale there. Anywhere in that would get you a C. I want to point out something very important to you. You see these numbers here, this is the gain. What you're saying, and I say in math, we're saying the average elementary student in Rutherford County in comparison to all students in Tennessee, elementary students in Tennessee, if they were at the sixtieth percentile, they finished last year at the sixty point five. That's your average. We added value, they gained in value, that's a positive number. And likewise, for all the other courses, you can look at the same. Anything, anytime you have a positive number there, you have added value to the students and increased their comparison to all students in the state of Tennessee took this test. Okay, how do we do? Two Bs, two Cs from all A's, looks kind of bad, doesn't it? Well, let's stop and look. There's Rutherford County, two Bs, two Cs, there's our gains. Murphishboro City, all Cs, I see two negative numbers, two losses. I look at Williamson County, they made all Cs. I see a negative gain in reading language arts. In other words, the kids lost. Montgomery County over here's got three Cs and a B. I see a negative number there, a no gain there in reading and language. Oak Ridge spends a lot of money, a D, two Cs, and another D, two Ds, two Cs. I see negative in math, and I see a negative in science there. Knox County did quite well, three Bs and a C, and there's their gains, it's positive. Wilson County, all Cs, again, you see about three negative areas. So when I, Mr. Gill, when I first heard this, two Bs and two Cs, you say, oh, no, you know, what's happened? But when you go back and look, and you get the picture of what's happened to everyone else, I literally went through every school system in Tennessee, kind of, and toggled through it, I didn't find anyone that had all A's. In fact, you don't find many A's anywhere. I mean, they really did make this one a tough, tough standard. It takes a gain of plus one point seven five to earn an A. You have to change a kid's relative to others in the state, one point seventy-five NCE points. I have an opinion here that they raised it too high, because between third grade and eighth grade, five years, you're going to have to change a kid consistently. You're approaching eight point seventy-five percent higher, you know, or almost nine percent. That's a mathematical extreme challenge, and I'm not sure the state hasn't set this too high. I mean, I think that shows up when no system in the state gets A's, you know, something a little bit strange there, but we do very well even with that. High school value-added, once again, that's very, very good. Last year, if you remember, we were not above in Algebra I. In fact, the last two years, I've told you, we were having trouble in Algebra I. Thank you for allowing us to hire some, an additional math teacher in high school. Those begin to make a difference. So last year, the predicted score was five forty-six point six, they scored five fifty point four, that's a scale score, and so our three years, still no detectable difference, because it's those prior years before, where we even scored below one year. But now, except English one is no detectable difference, that's not a loss. Predicted score was five twenty-eight point five, and we scored nine, five twenty-nine. It's just so close to the middle from the standard era of measure, that you can't say that that's above or below, it's just, it's in the average range. But again, three years, very, very respectful, and I urge you to take a look at some other systems in Tennessee, and you won't see that. You won't see that many above, statistically above. There is their definition of above. Students in this school or district made significantly more progress in this subject than students in the average school in the state. So, I mean, that's a commendation in itself. How about ACT? That's one of the new things coming up. Look at us, in last year's ACT scores for our students, we're above predicted everywhere three years in a row. Rutherford County's been above prediction. That's very noteworthy for our high school people, you know, that certainly helps them. We offer in our courses, remember, standard level, honors level, advanced honors level, AP, IB, that sort of thing, so we have a mechanism in place to take some of our best and brightest students to try to extend them even more. And to get value-added, you have to extend them beyond what's predicted for them, based on their prior achievement. So that's why that's happening. Non-academic requirements under No Child Left Behind, high school and elementary both have a non-academic requirement. In elementary school, the non-academic requirement is attendance rate must be above ninety-three percent. Last year, ours was ninety-five point seven, and it's gone up every year. We'll see what H1N1 does this year, when this one's finished, certainly above. In high school, and this is probably one of the things that we're most proud of, we're at ninety-one point three percent last year. It'll not count for AYP until next year, but we're at ninety-one point three percent graduation rate, and that's the target, is ninety percent, so we're actually above that. And you may ask yourself the question, because you may say with a cohort, which is a four-year dropout rate of five point nine percent, why can't you take five point nine percent from a hundred, you know, and you have ninety-four point one? It's because under No Child Left Behind, the definition for it, you cannot include people getting GEDs, you cannot include special ed diplomas, you may not include any student that takes longer than four years and one summer to graduate. None of those will count on your graduation rate, so that's why your cohort rate can be lower than the other. So that's a pretty tough standard there.
Just quickly, and I know the board remembers, graduation coaches have made a difference. We get asked on a pretty consistent basis, how do your graduation coaches work? What do they do? What are their responsibilities? What a good step that the board took.
I think, without a doubt. I, I think, without a doubt. I mean, it starts showing up, it shows up in the numbers. The first year we had the graduation coach, they really were working with a lot of seniors who were so far behind in credits, that was very difficult. They were working on, on making up credits, credit recovery, things like that. But again, it's very difficult to get them out in four years in one summer with the total number of credits they needed. They began last year starting to work more with students who were freshmen and all, and so they're beginning to work with these kids all the way up. So when they become a senior, that they're close to having the number of credits that you can earn in a year, that you're not behind. They call parents, visit homes, uh, uh, they do. They go out with our attendance teachers, encourage them to come in, take night classes, to take credit recovery. I mean, they're real advocates targeting that student that's having problems, and it's made a difference.
I don't wanna, you're doing such a wonderful job, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, the fact that the school, we've got credit recoveries helped so much, grade recovery, intervention periods. You know, that's, that's one of the, we kind of gripe about NCLB, but it has forced us to do some different things to make sure kids are successful. These things are clearly paying off.
I think so, and you, I mean, and you as a board, you're, you're absolutely a part of this. Here's something else I'm very proud of too. We, in the value added, we can, we can go in and drill down and see how our schools compare to all the schools in the state. In elementary, there's a thousand and fifty-three schools that take this test. But what this says, what I, I'm showing you here, this is a top ten percent of elementary in the state for value added. Barfield is not only in the top ten percent, they're number eight out of a thousand and fifty-three schools. All, Thurman Francis is in the top ten percent. Reading, language arts, Barfield, John Coleman, Thurman Francis is in it. Science, Barfield and Blackman are in the top ten percent. Social studies, Barfield's number seven. Blackman, John Coleman are in the top ten percent. When you look at the middle schools, you got mathematics, Laverne, Laverne Middle School, one of our areas, it's really kind of a poverty area, you know what I'm talking about? They're number ten in the state. There's a little over six hundred, about six hundred and fifty middle schools that take this test. So they're number ten. Segal's in the top ten percent, Thurman Francis in the top ten percent. In reading, language arts, you got Christiana. Laverne Middle is number three in the state in reading, language arts gains for students, significant. Rock Springs, top ten percent, Stewart's Creek, Thurman Francis, top ten percent. In science, Christiana, Laverne's number six in the state. Segal is in the top ten percent, Smyrna Middle's in the top ten percent. In social studies, Laverne Middle again's the top ten percent and Segal's in the top ten percent of the state. That, that's noteworthy, when you have that many schools that are top ten percent of the state adding value. All right, here's ACT Explorer. Christiana, Laverne Middle, Segal Middle, and Thurman Francis all scored in the top ten percent of the state in ACT Explorer, in the gains for that. I made the mistake of reading some of the DNJ blogs. And, uh, you know, I saw one statement in there that so you are scoring this, then you are at the bottom of the worst. So that, that's enough to get you interested, you know? I want to show you something. This is the ACT Explorer test that was taken last year. They're getting results back right now, but I do not have a, a compilation for the system, but we're beginning to get this year. We tested two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six students. We tested them all, we didn't pick the right ones to test, we tested all of those eighth graders. What you see right here, and this is a national comparison score, okay? Cause the national test is, is the ACT Eighth Grade Explorer Test. Rutherford County students, now the highest you can score is twenty-five. I mean, ACT at the finals, I believe thirty-five, thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
I think, at, at the end. But the highest you can score is twenty-five. The average student in Rutherford County, we scored fifteen point two, the national average fourteen point two. In math, fifteen point five, for Rutherford County, fifteen point one nationally. Fourteen point six in reading, thirteen point eight nationally. Sixteen point eight, fifteen point nine nationally, for the composite, fifteen point six versus fourteen point nine. That is a national comparison.
So we're the best of the best.
We did very well. I, I can tell you something I know right now, um, I know Clark Blair told me from, um, McFadden, they've gotten their scores back this year. They have five students that scored a twenty-five. That's about ten percent of their student body, they have fifty kids. That, that's the highest score you can get. Now, that'll show up a little later. So we are doing some very extraordinary things, uh, for students. There's a national comparison, it's not the top of the worst, okay? In high school, some of the same thing, biology, Blackman, Segal, Smyrna, Smyrna's number three in the state. Out of a little over three hundred high schools. In, in that one, it varies a little bit from subject to subject because some systems have seven, eight, nine as a middle grade, you know? So you have slightly different count, but all of these are a little over three hundred. Uh, in English Two, Blackman, Riverdale, Segal, Smyrna's number three again in the state out of over three hundred. English One, Smyrna's number eight. Uh, in US History, Blackman, Segal's sixth in the state, Smyrna's number two in the state. Uh, Smyrna started, um, Smyrna started PLCs before Rutherford County started to see PLCs. They got more under this. The top ten percent of high schools in value added in writing, Blackman, Segal, Smyrna. ACT math, Segal, Smyrna. ACT English, Segal, Smyrna. ACT reading, Segal, Smyrna. ACT science, Blackman, Segal, Smyrna. ACT composite, top ten percent of the state, Segal and Smyrna, both of those. That comes into the fact that there's fourteen Rutherford County schools scored in the top ten percent of schools in the state for value added scores in one or more subject areas. Of the twelve, there are twelve tested areas in high school, the parts of the ACT, the end of course and the gateway. There are twelve possibilities. And they're in, to be in the top ten percent. In ten of twelve possibilities, Smyrna High is in the top ten percent of the state. In nine of twelve possibilities, Segal High is in the top ten of the state. And Blackman High in five of the twelves is in the top ten percent of the stadium value added. That, that's extraordinary. Graduation rate, uh, again, every school has a separate graduation rate track, that's another, No Child Left Behind. For last year, for seven, eight, which is reported for AYP, we had to have an eighty-six point six. We actually attained an, an eighty-eight. And of course, as you've already seen, we're at ninety-one point three. So we are now above our graduation rate track. The other thing that you might see is another tab on the state report card is teachers. Again, there's your teacher count. We have one teacher waiver that was for an ESL. Very difficult to find ESL teachers, not many of those certified. Kind of explaining this one, this is your breakdown of the education level of the teachers in Rutherford County. You see some over here with zero years experience, that's your career and technical people. That, where you have some subjects, they're not college graduates, but they come in and teach a specific area. Another thing that we're very proud of, Rutherford County last year, highly qualified, ninety-nine point ninety-five percent of our courses were taught by highly qualified teachers. That's a very good number also. Goals a hundred. We're five hundreds off. Okay, now I want to talk about the challenges very briefly. This is the last year, this is two thousand, uh, seven, eight through two thousand nine, ten. These are the cut scores for elementary and the cut scores for high school. After this year, unless they re-authorize, or re-change No Child Left Behind in some way, it will jump five percent to ninety-four, to ninety-three in math and elementary. It'll go to ninety-seven percent in high schools and then ninety-one percent for math in high schools. The next step after that is the one hundred percent for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. You know, I, I hope somebody takes a look at this. Because to make everybody proficient or advanced is gonna be one heck of a challenge. Our graduation challenge, we gotta achieve and maintain that ninety percent graduation rate. We've got a phase in the twenty-two credit, we have twenty-three, you know, for our students in Rutherford County, but twenty-two for special ed and everybody. But the four years of math in high school, Algebra One or higher, the lowest course you can take in those four years is Algebra One, and from there up, you gotta have the three sciences, biology, chemi, and then chemistry or physics and another lab science. An additional one half credit in physical education. I mean, I'm gonna pause and say something here because this is gonna faze you relatively quickly. They will let us waive a half a credit for certain students in band, ROTC, some of the athletics program. The principals tell me that roughly fifty percent of their students will probably have to take, literally take the other half credit in PE. We've got seven high schools. If that translates into one extra PE teacher for seven high schools, that little requirement right there is probably gonna cost you four hundred thousand plus. If you think about one average teacher for each high school. We added in two thousand seven, eight, six graduation coaches, we, it's made a difference. Mr. Gill's pointed that out. We added two alternative transition person, we added six Algebra One teachers. Remember, we're above now in Algebra One and we were below prior to that, it's worked. Six elementary math reading coaches, this is our pilot program that we're doing. I'll tell you a little statistic here, it's really interesting. The schools that we have the RTI program in with the extra reading coach is scoring fourteen percent higher in the state ranking than the schools who do not have. It works, we do not have the money to implement this program, you know, even though we know it works. So I, I want to say this to you, when we achieve adequate yearly progress, it just doesn't happen. There's lots of things taking place. And, and your support, the, the teachers, the administrators, the staff, the parents, the students, all make a difference. And special thanks to you as a board for recognizing what it takes to support a high-quality program. And you have a high-quality program in Rutherford County schools. We had a visiting sax team here this week, they recognized it. Said that, we had two very interesting compliments. I had, one of the gentlemen told me, he said, what I did is I went to Walmart and talked to people, not just the people at the school or we brought in. He said, when I went down the hallways of the school, I stopped kids, not the ones you picked for me to talk to, but I stopped kids and asked them. He said, I didn't get any negative responses anywhere. That people were appreciative of Rutherford County schools and what we did for students. I think the other situation that was kind of very interesting is we got ready to leave, the lady that headed it up, which was from right outside of Washington, uh, in Falls Church or something, Virginia. She said, Rutherford County needs to consider coming to the National Convention for Advanced Ed or Sax Cassie and make a presentation, there's a lot of school systems need to be doing what you're doing. And then that's a pretty good compliment.
Absolutely.
But again, thank you.
Mr. Odom, I think you've done an outstanding job. I, I know there's some other comments from the board, but I want to make a comment right now, cause it's, it's important to me. The system's done an excellent job, an outstanding job, and it's because of good leadership from Mr. Gill and from you. And, and, and the one, one thing that you didn't cover on there, when we said how much we pay for each student and whatever, well, when you, when you compare our director of schools with these same systems, you'll find that his salary is much lower than theirs, I mean, quite a bit lower than theirs. One of the questions they asked us yesterday was, do we tie our director of school's salary increases to what we've done? And our answer, of course, was no, we don't. Many systems do. Mr. Gill, you've done outstanding job, I think you're unpaid. I know there are probably a lot of blogs tomorrow saying, you know, I'm crazy, but it's the truth. And, uh, I just want to consider that as we go along.
Any other questions?
You know, we hear so many negative things or, and we deal with so many problems, uh, every time we, we meet. And, uh, it is so refreshing to hear so many positive, uh, you know, when we're comparing ourselves to, uh, to other counties and systems and even, even nationwide. And Mr. Gill, I congratulate you and, and Mr. Odom and the entire central office. What an outstanding job and thank you so much. Our children are benefiting from the intervention and the staff development. And, uh, again, I'm grateful for what you do.
We have not hidden scores from you, these things, you can go see them yourself, they're straight off the report card. So, I mean, you, you-
Mark for it.
I, I want to agree with all the praise, this is an outstanding report card. You know, my kids always want to go to Steak and Shake if they get a good report card.
That's the reason I look like I do.
Might not be able to give you a raise, but we take your steak and shake.
McDonald's might be, we have, but, you know.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled with these, uh, numbers. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, Don is, uh, Harry can answer these too, I'm sure. Were the achievement, the achievement scales, they were not adjusted, is that correct? And the achievement test numbers, are they, can you compare those?
The numbers are adjusted, the numbers are adjusted because the norm was ninety-eight. So you, if you go back and look at last year's report card, you'll find the average across the state was not fifty percentile. You're gonna see upper fifties and things like that. So the scores that the students, the scores they made, now will be closer to fifty percent on the average. Now, the scale in there, they have adjusted both the scale on value added and achievement and the scale.
Well, what I'm getting at is it seems like they made the value added, the change there was more dramatic than the change in achievement, is that correct?
Without a doubt, I would say that's true.
The other question, I think there's some confusion, I know there's some confusion in the public about the difference between those two scores. Could you talk a little bit about, just briefly, the difference between achievement scores and value added? And what I'm gonna ask, I'd, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I typically say, well, the better measure of a school's performance is value added.
I agree.
And, and we shine in both, and if you just look at the letter grades, you might not realize how well we've done in value added, but your presentation did a good job of explaining that, I think. Could you just-
There's a lot of inability in the achievement. You know, a, a child might enter first grade or something like that, that's had lots of opportunities, strong intellect, they might come in immediately with a fairly high achievement. Now, whatever they enter with in that achievement, then the school system, the value added then begins to measure what we add to that. In, in Tennessee, the students are tested third grade, we start with the state testing starts third grade and then goes through high school. So your value added measure, again, if it's a plus one percent, then you have improved that student relative to every other student in Tennessee by that one percent. I think value added is a very, a very good measure. Uh, and it shows up a lot when you look at, I mean, like a Laverne Middle, basically, socioeconomic there with a high, John Coleman. If you go back and look at their achievement level, it will be below the others, but the people are scoring second and third in the state and stuff like that, and adding value. Once they go to school there, that achievement is growing at a rapid rate, higher than across the state, much higher than across the state. But it's gonna take those kids a while to get there. So I, I think it's the, the, uh, value added is the great leveller. It's not what you start with, it's what you do with the students and the programs you have once they get there.
I'll shut up after this, but a lot of times you hear people bandy about the names of what they think are the best schools in the community, and when you look at the value added scores, they're often wrong, you know?
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Well, we, we pat ourselves on the back, we, we pat our director, we pat our, his assistant, we pat ourselves, we pat our staff. I'd like to reach out to every parent out there and pat them on the back because they are as key a role, have as key a role in this as anyone, maybe even more so. So our parents are doing a good job in helping their children achieve these results.
I agree, and every teacher and administrator, myself and Mr. Gill do not teach a single student, you know? But there's some teachers out there that's getting this value added, that, that are working themselves hard to accomplish this. Our people understand data, they look at data and they're driven. We had a PLC today, I went around to a couple of schools, they are looking at data and seeing what they can do to be better.
What these scores tell me is that the teachers and the, uh, the aides or the assistants and the students themselves have bought into this program. With the intervention and the, uh, other initiatives, uh, the learning communities, it's just, it's impressive. And, and I think we've, Mr. Gill, you've put together a, a tremendous recipe for success and to build this program.
Thank you.
Any other?
I was gonna make mention that the fast pace that, that, that our county is growing. When you compare this to some of the other areas, you know, and able to, us to, to get these figures indicates we're doing an extra good job, because some of the school systems up there are, that are scoring high, uh, close to what we do, are not growing at near the rate. And because it's, it's not just money, there's just, there's some lag when, when, when things come about and this growth, you, it's hard to keep up with it, but we, y'all doing an excellent job.
Our crediting team noticed that because they said, how in the world can you take this many new students and bring them up and take this many teachers? One of the ladies on the crediting, she says, I got three kids in education. She said, any of the three, I'd be glad for them to work for Rutherford County schools because you hire good people and you support your teachers and make them grow.
She mentioned the assist program.
She did. Assist program for them, the, the facilitators that then follow up with those teachers and do. We do that, we, we don't have the fifty percent loss that you see in other places. Miss Barnes tracks that and all too, you're not seeing that in Rutherford County schools.
We open a lot of new schools, and typically when you open a new school, the first and second year, the scores are down. And ours are not, which is amazing to me, because usually you bring a different group of kids in and it, it tends to lower your scores, but ours are not lower, so. Any other comments?
First, I appreciate Mr. Odom very much, he knows that, I tell him that on a consistent basis, but I think he and I are liking that- basis, but I think he and I are liking that. You know, we didn't give it a big yee-haw. We saw the report card. It was more a case of relief. He can start getting ready for next year. Uh, I was particularly proud of what the lady reported yesterday. They interviewed six hundred and seventy-four people-
Six hundred and fifty-six people.
Six hundred and fifty-six people. And she said the common denominator was one, they felt supported by the central office staff. Secondly, the high expectations that were set and the pride that they took in their job, and I'm talking about the principals right on through the ranks of the teachers, uh, uh, the different programs like the assist program, the graduation coaches, all the things that, that we've done that we got feedback from teachers and principals that made a difference. And you know what? I was probably more proud of that than I was the report card in itself.
Compliments.
You know, yeah, absolutely. Our people do have pride. And I appreciate you, Mr. Odom.
Any other comment?
Let's go on.
Are we ready for nine, right?
Yes, sir.
McFadden School of Excellence Admission Policy. Now, we discussed this the other night. And basically, uh, the crux of the discussion was, the way things are done now is that the, uh, first priority goes to siblings, second is Rutherford County students, thirdly, Murfreesboro City. If there's room left, uh, the city kids have access. We also discussed the fact that we're opening a six-twelve magnet school and that we'd be adding a grade to each level, which would create more seats. And that said, I, I don't know what the will of the board is. I know there's some discussion about having anybody, city or county residents having priority. So, you guys can take it from there.
Hodge?
I'd like, as I did last month, uh, I'll do it again. I'd like to put a motion out there to remove from the McFadden admissions policy the, uh, where it's basically, we're giving preference to county students over city students.
Second. Any other discussion, Mr. Blair?
We heard Tuesday night, uh, in our work session, that basically for the last several years, the, the two groups have been just about even. Uh, you know, it seems to me that, uh, it's, it's a policy that has worked well. And at this point, I, I don't see any reason to change it. So, I would, I would oppose a change at this time.
Very good.
We're, we're talking about changing a policy based on, um, comments offered from someone in the community. I've had no one to approach me to say, "We should change this." I can't speak for others, but personally, I've had no one to approach me. We've not heard from a past administrator at McFadden nor the current administrator for McFadden, nor have we heard from our director of schools or their input. It's been past practice that we have a recommendation from the director. Uh, um, nor have we heard, have we gone and solicited input from our community. So, I'm wondering if, if we should back up and look for input from our stakeholders before making a decision about changing the admissions policy. And I'm, and I'm putting a question mark at the back of that.
Did you want to make a recommendation or did you want to just leave it up to the board?
I will leave it up to the board.
Do you want to make a motion to, to table this or do you want to just wait and see what everybody else says? Or what do you want to do?
Well, I don't know what my fellow board members think of, if, you know, what they're, what is your take on what I've just said? If you think it's a waste of time, tell me. Uh, I don't, I would like to, short of making a motion, I'd like to have input from others, stakeholders.
I don't necessarily think that'd be a waste of time, but I think we're all pretty familiar with this issue. We've talked about it. This is at least the third or fourth time that we've discussed it. I've had plenty of people, now, I'm in an unusual situation in that I have a child at McFadden and I've been aware of this policy. And as I said before, I complained to Ms. Barnes about it long before I took that on the board. She was very nice. Let me repeat that. Didn't move an inch, but she was very nice. Um, so I've had plenty of people, both in regard to that and also when we had the discussion about the admission policy to Central. There are a good many parents who, city parents, who have some bitterness, uh, over the McFadden policy. Yeah, the numbers now are roughly equal. What would they be if we removed this prohibition? I don't know. They might not change at all. Uh, but there are certainly plenty of people in the city who, who feel, and we come back to the same argument, that they feel like they should be equal, treated equally as any other resident of the county. And this policy doesn't do that. So, I think we should change it. I'm just not sure what we would hear from stakeholders that we don't already know.
Mr. Hodge first and Mr. Gill wants to make-
I'd, I'd basically, and I could ramble on this issue all night long, but I'll basically go back probably nine years ago, whenever this, whenever McFadden was started. I'd, if I had to guess, I'd say at that time, stakeholders, nobody asked their opinion out there then. I'm talking about the city people. I mean, on top of that, you're talking about admission policy. You're talking about a policy here that never went through the board. So, going back to stakeholders, I'm, I'm just going back nine years ago, you know, if you had surveyed the people in the city, I'm sure you'd have a lot of input. I'm just, I'm just going back to, I don't make it right myself.
Again, as I said Tuesday night, it's a county school for the benefit of the education of the county. That's those folks outside the periphery of Murfreesboro. And yes, we'd all pay taxes. But, uh, what, this school, if you cha, if you changed the enrollment policy or procedure, could, and, and I guess under the current enrollment policy, it could become almost one hundred percent populated by children with inside the, the Murfreesboro City School or Murfreesboro City Limits who are to be educated by the Murfreesboro City School System. And what happens when we have the reverse question and children that outside the city limits can't get into the school because children to be educated by the Murfreesboro City School System occupy all the seats? So, I, I'm, I'm speaking, uh, because I have a concern about the education of the county students that I rep, that we all represent because we represent the county school system. And, and I am a city resident, but I have that, have that concern.
Doris, and I, that's, I appreciate you having that concern. I think it would be unlikely, and, and I don't think any of us want it to be an exclusively city of Murfreesboro school. That's a given. It's unlikely, though, that that would happen, given that McFadden has a pass-fail system. It's not a rank-order system. It's pass-fail. And then I assume we, well, I don't assume, I know that if we change this, there, you take the siblings first, then there would be a lottery if there's an excessive number of people who qualify. So, I'd have to get Mr. Odom to do the statistics, but I mean, the odds would be low that you would wind up with an exclusively city student population because you're going to be drawing them by chance.
Grant wants to say something.
Well, if you haven't rebutted him, I'll, I'll wait.
Just, just a very quick one. We're at fifty, approximately fifty percent in, in city and county with our present system. Why do we think we won't have that same percentile if we go on continuing for the next empty, empty years with the same policy? Will we not have approximately fifty-fifty, which is a very good number because everybody's got to change? And I don't, I don't think that's going to change if we change, by changing the policy.
Grant?
In response to the, I call it the rationalness of this, uh, motion, that I think we need to give a little time. I haven't had any input from, from any of the citizens, uh, and, uh, I would like to defer this for one month and be prepared for, uh, some action on it at, uh, one month from now.
Mr. Hodge?
My, my response to that is we delayed it last month to this month. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know where this rocket's sent. I mean, why does it take so much time to decide something?
Well, I put a deadline on it, so-
What kind of deadline? We did it last month.
There's a table to, a motion to table, stop discussion.
Well, we'd have to vote on the motion if it passes. So-
You didn't, but you didn't make, if you made a table and motion and got a second, then we'd debate the motion.
I, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but I, I don't know, and I'm like, Mr. Hodge, I don't know that it's going to make any difference whether it's voted tonight or two weeks from tonight. I, I mean, it might, but I don't know that. But if somebody wants to make that motion, you know, we could get a second and see it, see if the board does want to delay it.
Well, I made the motion. I, I said the next month. So, I maintain that motion to be voted on.
I'm going to second this motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I think we've discussed that out. Let's vote on that first. Miss, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Don. I didn't, I didn't anticipate you tonight.
Well, uh, I just, uh, with this tabling and we're looking at, uh, the, what information are we seeking as a result? That, that's-
I'd like to hear more from our stakeholders because I've heard from those stakeholders. I would like to hear more from past administrators and our staff. And then I would like to hear from our director.
Any more discussion or do you want to vote on the, the tabling? Let's vote on it. Ms. Michael's to call the roll. Now, a no vote means we don't table it. No, no. A yes vote means we table it and a no vote means we don't. Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Blair?
No.
Dr. Burns?
No.
Mr. Hodge?
No.
Mr. Donald Jernigan?
No.
Mr. Doris Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
No.
Ms. Taylor. What motion if it passes?
Now, we vote on the regular motion.
Motion fails.
Fail.
It failed. It failed. Now, we vote on the regular motion, whether to change the policy or not. Everybody understand that? Go ahead, Ms. Michael.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Doris Jernigan?
No.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Donald Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Wise?
You wanted this, right?
Juan Mel Prias?
Uh, Central Magnet School Eligibility Participating Athletics, uh, presuming that, uh, Central Middle, presuming that Central Magnet School has every sport offered at the school with the exception of football and wrestling. The existing T double double A rule is that we have to designate a site. For example, if, if there are football players coming to Central Middle from across the county, Central Magnet, pardon me, we'd have to say, "If you want to play football, guys, you got to go to Oakland or Segal or Smyrna." Or in other words, we have to designate one place. Same holds true for wrestling. That said, we've written the T double double A Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association and asked them to change that rule whereby kids could return to their zone school and participate in those two sports. We're on the December ninth agenda, uh, before the T double double A change that. And I think, I don't know what, what that vote holds, but, uh, after that's, uh, after that's concluded, I guess we'll come back to the board with some final recommendations.
It only makes sense because obviously that, otherwise you could be getting unfair advantage from one school.
Looks to me like in leader recruiting too.
That's right.
I just don't think they faced this particular issue before and they probably will do something with it. Any other discussion on that?
Riverdale High School Synthetic Turf. This is an information only. The board previously
allowed Riverdale High School and Livingston and Livingston Consulting to develop and implement fundraising and financing efforts to purchase and install an outdoor synthetic turf football soccer field. Fundraising efforts have been underway and Livingston and Livingston Consulting is in the process of securing a five-year interest-free loan from Wilson Bank and Trust for the purposes of building an outdoor synthetic football field at Riverdale High School. Funds will be generated through the school's boosters clubs, businesses and private citizens, and there will be no cost to the board. The loan agreement is similar to the loan security or construction of, uh, the Oakland High School indoor athletic facility. Two or three important notes. One, as it says, there'll be no cost to the board at any point, even if they default on the loan. Secondly, uh, uh, as we said the other night, a lot of people probably think it's not a real wise investment, but on the other hand, you save a ton of money by doing it. Uh, upkeep on the field, watering fields, more folks get to use it, uh, without the wear and tear to the facility. So, we think at the end of the day, it's a pretty good investment. I personally applaud Riverdale for doing it.
Discussion on that?
Go ahead.
Ten. Rutherford County Schools Tennis Complex Change Order. Same construction company has completed the Rutherford County Tennis Complex. They have submitted a deductive change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents for credits taken during the construction of the Rutherford County Schools Tennis Complex. This would change the contract amount from one million, six hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars to one million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Recommend that you approve the deductive change order submitted by Same Construction for twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents for the balance of the credits remaining in the contract for the Rutherford County Schools Tennis Complex. This will decrease the final contract amount from one million, six hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars to one million, five, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
B. Eagleville High School Greenhouse. Uh, Eagleville Principal Rhonda Holton has requested permission to purchase a used greenhouse that would be disassembled, moved and reassembled on the school property by the Eagleville FFA alumni. The greenhouse is forty feet wide and seventy feet long and would be placed adjacent to the existing greenhouse. The greenhouse will be purchased and reassembled at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. Recommend that you approve the purchase and construction of a forty-by-seventy used greenhouse by Eagleville High School at no cost to the board.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to commend Mrs. Holton. She's like Mrs. Davenport. She's always out there in the community finding something, uh, to promote or advance her, uh, you know, her campus. And, uh, the board appreciates all the money she saves.
Any other question? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Think you could collect enough brick and block to make twelve classrooms out there?
I would, yeah. But I would like to have that foot on fire or something. I wish it.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we left you out of that, didn't we? Sorry.
You mentioned Eagleville.
She's wants turf, most likely.
Okay, I think we're ready for, we did twelve, didn't we?
Now.
We're down to thirteen.
No, we didn't do twelve. That's the policies.
Pardon?
We need twelve.
We need twelve. Those are policies. We didn't do them.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to read all those tonight? I don't think we need to read all those policies tonight. People need to, want to know what the policies are, they can go on the website and find those. And I think that's, uh, I don't think that's real productive just to read them. So, is there any question about any of them?
Ricky might just say what he is. I think there's a lot of interest. If I can find it, I will.
What page is it on?
If you could on it.
What page? Page eight?
It's the Community Use of School Facility.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, first thing is the, uh, community, I've lost it again. Community Use of School Facilities, uh, revision will allow, lost it a third time. Revision will- Revision will allow school facilities to be used for public, there you go. Community or recreational purposes regardless of whether a benefit may accrue to the prospective user. Each organization will be required to obtain approval of the principal prior to the request being submitted to the board for approval. The director will implement procedures requiring for-profit groups to pay a minimum fee of $150 per day for the use of the school facilities.
Thank you, Michael.
Angel, did we, does this take into account the meeting we had and with the principals?
It does take into account what we discussed, that's what the $150 minimum is. You will not see that figure reflected in the actual policy, it is in the procedure. And it's reflected on the form that all groups would have to fill out in order to get approval. So, it designates that on the form.
Okay.
Any other discussion about that, Doris?
Is that 150 plus, basically, uh, the janitorial service? Is there a separate...
I think it was a flat 150, wasn't it?
The 150 would be a minimum for use of the building. The custodial services typically in the procedure as it has been, and, and would continue to be the same if you pass this, are paid separate from and outside of, and directly to the person who provides those services, and it would continue to be that way.
Doris, did you have something you want to say on this?
Well, this is, I, I did not rec, I recall the $150 when we were discussing that, and, um, I, I have some questions about that. With the addition to the, uh, additional, that is an additional charge beyond what is customary. Is that correct?
No, sir.
Well, it's not.
I think what you, um, what the board asked us to do was to talk to a group of principals about charging for-profit groups specifically, um, a, a schedule of fees for use of the building. And so, when we met with the principals and discussed that, what they, what they felt like would be the best solution was to be a minimum fee. And that fee would then be able to be increased as larger portions of the building and more equipment were used. But each for-profit group would be charged a minimum of 150, not 150 on top of what they have already been charging, but that would be their base.
But by being here, it, it moves into policy and out of procedures, is that correct?
No, I just put that note in there in the last portion of that to let you know that the director had implemented the procedure to, to charge the minimum of 150. It is not reflected in the actual policy.
But it would ultimately be a requirement?
Yes.
For example, maybe this is where Ms. Jernigan's going, I missed it. Previous years, we didn't have, we, we didn't require that they charge anything.
Correct.
Or didn't regulate what they charged, or didn't encourage them to charge 150 some, I'm sure they were charging, probably.
Most of them are, yes.
Uh, can you remind me of the rationale? Because we had a lengthy discussion on why we arrived at 150. Do you remember?
The rationale for that was if you, if you start at, just for example, you know, a group that will only use, um, a small auditorium one day, that $150 would be an adequate fee to cover the cost for use of the building. But it is so, it, it is such a widespread issue, depending on what school you use and how much area you use and what equipment you use, that it was difficult to, to iron down particular fees. So, what, what the principals decided and what our discussion was, that a, a 150 base would cover minimal expenses for limited use. As you go up in number of days and area and equipment, that fee would increase. So, you will see a much, a much larger fee for a high school auditorium where they are using, you know, the equipment and the audio, sound equipment and those kinds of things for a three or four-day period. Some of the dance studios in particular, you know, they'll use the, the facility one night for rehearsals, they use the, the dressing rooms, the, the choir rooms. You know, there are five or six areas that are used, plus all of the equipment, and somebody to run the equipment, and then all those kinds of things. So, that fee will increase as those things increase. But nobody will be able to, no for-profit group would be able to use a facility for free or less than 150.
Everybody clear on that? Does that make, that answer your question, Ms. Jernigan? Any other discussion on that? Okay.
13.
Well, we need to, we need to, you need to make the recommendation for all those policies and vote on them.
All right.
Unless there's a question about another policy in there. We've discussed them all, and voted on them once.
Do we have another discussion on them?
Uh, I think, I think this is it.
On the policies, is this the final reading on it?
No, they're for a second reading.
I thought so. Uh, recommend you approve, uh, the policies reflected on, uh, this week's board agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 13.
Transportation. Pursuant to Section 16.1 of the Rutherford County Board of Education, bus contract transportation department has received a letter dated November the 16th, 2009 from Robert Baltimore, contractor of Bus 177, requesting voluntary termination of his contract. He further requests that the 60-day notice be waived. The transportation department is prepared to award this contract to the next potential contractor on the appropriate contractor list. Recommend we approve the termination of the bus contract from Robert Balt, Baltimore, Bus 177, effective soon as possible.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion. Got a second? Okay. Any discussion? Don?
How are we coming on our list of people? Where are we?
We're on the second list.
On the second list at this time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some carriage. Uh, now, we're down to general discussion of the board. I have a comment I want to make, and then if anybody wants to make something else. Uh, Ms. Michaels, the board did pretty much decide that they would like to meet for a Christmas luncheon or dinner, and if we, uh, you know, it's, our schedule is really tight now, and I don't know that we can get it in before Christmas, but you, you look at the thing, because I don't know if we can meet everybody's times, because I know Mr. Jernigan meets everywhere, and we all have other meetings, so, but anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. Mr. Jernigan.
Smyrna West is gone, and it's kids, but, you know, they had, they began as an alternative school. You know, that term is thrown around a lot. But I'm really proud of Smyrna West, because they are truly an alternative to the program that those students were in at their home school. And I think that the success that those students are having is a good example of why we need to explore different avenues of instruction in the county. And I, I'm very proud of that.
Just to follow up on what he's saying, I was fortunate to go to the conference that Ms. Davenport mentioned. It was at, uh, Convention Center in Nashville, it was a national conference. Students from all over the United States were there, putting on presentations about how service learning applied to them in their environment. One of them was even a school from an Indian, an American Indian nation. So, it was an American Indian group from their high school coming and talking about service learning. It, you know, you, you've had subject matter that's above your head. I was drowning in that environment, because I knew nothing about it. I, it was total, you, I'm still, I, I got excited about something I knew nothing about.
Do you need to go on that show, Mr. Jordan, in a fifth grade?
No, I'm not. But I want to move on to something else. Mr. Gill, did you get a CD from Segal Middle School Jazz Band?
I did, yes, sir.
Fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Those kids, it, it must have been, they must have borrowed students from MTSU's jazz band to play. No, they were that good, they were excellent, excellent.
I'm just so appreciative of the board. We all have such busy schedules, but we all made it here for that interview with the Saks Committee. And the enthusiasm we have for our system, I, I think that, that group sensed that. Matter of fact, they pretty much had to dismiss us because we were running over time, because we were so excited about sharing our story and, and the success that, that Rutherford County Schools, uh, has had. And, um, it was, uh, it was a thrill to get to do that, and, and I was certainly pleased to get to be with, uh, my fellow board members as we, uh, as we shared our thoughts with that group.
I think they're a little late getting back, weren't they, Ms. Odom? Because we made them late going to lunch. We told them we weren't, we weren't finished yet. They said, "We're, we're done." We said, "Well, we're not finished yet, we've got some more things to tell you."
Let me say one thing.
Go ahead, Ms. Michaels.
I want to, I want to piggyback what Mr. Donald Jernigan said, I appreciate that, too, about the success of Smyrna West. You know, they kind of view those kids, well, they're bad news, they're troublemakers. Well, you know, she, she's taking those guys in, uh, and, and girls, and, you know, shows them, care, she cares about them. Puts programs in place, and eventually reaches them to where they turn it around. And when you check, uh, Mr. Odom's presentation, when you look at the demographics of the county and the challenges we're faced, we saw where the Hispanic population's up to 8%. Uh, uh, we've got more Asians, we've got 40-something languages spoken in the county. We got to find ways, somehow, some way to touch all these guys, to meet all their needs, you know? Uh, otherwise, they go by the wayside. But it, it is, you know, when you go to Smyrna West, it's really, I mean, you always leave there with a good feeling, seeing what she do. I mean, it, it's, it's something. So, you know, we're perpetually in search of ways to meet all these, these student needs, but it's, it's tough.
Larry?
Do we have a bet between, uh, Mr. Hodge and, uh, Dr. Burns, since they're two, uh, campuses? Uh, well, yeah, they're, they're campuses are, are playing, uh, this...
On football tomorrow?
Well, since I still haven't collected the dinner, you owe me, uh, not even either.
You'll bet that on the game.
Well, it ought to be a great game.
I'll go with Steak 'n Shake, or whatever.
Well, the state championship still seems to, to run through Rutherford County, even if it's not going to be here, so, good luck to both of those programs. We're so proud of them.
Anybody else? All minds at ease. All right.